I was told that that really means a short statement from the outgoing chairman. Well, when you look at what you've done over the past year, it's not always easy to make it short. So I've made it as short as I can, but I focused on what I've been doing rather than all the visits that I've made. Because you've been kept up to date with those. So members, when I took on the role of the chairman of the council this time last year, I explained to you that my theme for the year would be Hampshire heritage. Not only to examine the heritage we currently enjoy, but I also wanted to find out what measures we, the county council, were putting in place to ensure a rich and enduring heritage for our children and our children's children. I'm extremely encouraged to report that, with the full cooperation of all directors and officers, I have been given every opportunity to explore, research, ask difficult questions and learn something of the pioneering work which is being undertaken. And what follows in my report is a brief overview of a very busy year, during which the Hampshire 2050 vision was revalidated and the Hampshire 2050 summit took place last November. Proactive in this was the Hampshire Youth Parliament and we value the voices of these young people who have helped to shape our priorities and our future heritage. The Hampshire Cultural Trust continues to go from strength to strength and now operates and manages a number of museums and heritage venues on behalf of the county council. This will help to deliver a sustainable future for culture and heritage in Hampshire. You will already be aware that the operation and management of the Great Hall was transferred recently to the cultural trust. Of course, heritage extends beyond the built environment. We have the heritage of our treasured national parks. And this year, the county council commenced a significant new piece of partnership work to develop a local nature recovery strategy which will guide our future local environmental priorities and to deliver benefits for nature and the environment. Our libraries and museums are responding to 21st century needs. They have become places of community and social hubs. And just one example is the work done by St Bart Museum in the New Forest. It has developed an integrated community partnership with the Royal Limington Yacht Club so that children and young people from financially vulnerable families can now experience exciting new opportunities. And more than 1,300 children took part in heritage education workshops at the Royal Victoria Chapel. Our fantastic archives and record service has run workshops for the University of Winchester degree students and delivered a highly successful open day last September. They have also had to put up with me making several visits, always overstaying my visit and always asking far too many questions. Incidentally, did you know that the Hampshire County Council has its own archaeology team which compiles the historical environmental record, the H E R database? In 2023-24, the number of records in H E R reached more than 80,000. We support 12 planning authorities and more than 1,000 planning applications each year, ensuring that Hampshire's heritage is conserved and enhanced. Members, I could go on and give you many more examples of how this county is utilizing, conserving and ensuring our future heritage. But of course, we must press on with today's agenda. However, I am very reassured that our heritage and our children's heritage are in good and very capable hands. I have done my own little bit towards leaving a small slice of heritage for Hampshire in that as chairman, I commissioned the composition of an anthem for Hampshire. And this was, dare I say, world premiere no less, at my April concert in the Great Hall. Knowing my interest in heritage and after me dropping quite large hints, I am delighted to say that the Hampshire Music Service has now also established a folk ensemble so that our folklore and culture heritage will also be retained. My special thanks for the dedicated work they do with young people must go to Sean Richards and John Cranston of the Hampshire Music Service. They work so hard and get amazing results from the young musicians and singers. I would also like to thank my vice-chairman Keith Mans. I don't think I've made the year too onerous for him and I certainly wish him all the best for the coming year. Two people who need my special thanks today are my consort Neil Rosbringer, who valiantly took on the role at fairly short notice and a great job he's made of it. So thank you Neil. Also, I should like to publicly thank my P A, I don't know if she's here today, my P A Natalie Jones. Natalie has displayed, I can assure you, the patience of a saint, has kept her cool and has always kept smiling. So thank you both very much indeed. I've enjoyed my year as chairman. I like to think I've made a small difference and heightened everyone's awareness of the scope and value of this wonderful county and Hampshire's heritage. And I'd also like to add my thanks to everyone in this chamber today for your patience, tolerance and forbearance in my role as chairman. So thank you. Thank you. I'm now going to ask Jo if there are any apologies today.
Thank you, Chairman. Apologies have been received from councillors Tim Davies, Rob Humby, Adam Jackman, Mark Kemp G, Alexis McAvoy, Phil North and Tanya Park and Honorary Oldman, Robin McIntosh and Patricia Banks. In addition, just to mention that councillor Martin Todd has indicated that he will arrive late. Thank you, Chairman.
Chairman. I'd like to ask the chief executive if any nominations have been received.
Councillors, could I please ask for any nominations to be chairman of the council? Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I'd like to nominate councillor Keith Mans as chairman of the council.
Is there a seconder?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to second that nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Right. Then I will ask you to indicate by a show of hands if you wish to appoint councillor Keith Mans as the incoming Chairman. Please show. Thank you. And similarly, a vote please for the incoming Vice Chairman. I'm jumping the gun rather, sorry. Right, okay. I think we now move to our well. You want to speak? I believe councillor Adams King wants to speak.
Madam Chairman, I would like to nominate councillor Anne Briggs as Vice Chairman of the Council.
That will be undertaken later on, on the agenda, onto the new Chairman. Councillor Porter.
Chief Premier, I've had forbearance, Chairman, I thought that was the process onto the Vice Chairman at this point, and I was going to interrupt because I would also like to nominate a Vice Chairman.
We're going to save that for later. Thank you. Right, the result of the vote is to confirm that councillor Mans has been elected as the incoming Chairman for Hampshire County Council. Congratulations to councillor Mans. [Applause]
The outgoing Chairman is just making a presentation to my consort, my wife Rosley. My first duty is to ask for a Vice Chairman to be appointed. Could I have nominations for the Vice Chairman of the Council? Councillor Adams King.
I'll do it again, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to nominate councillor Anne Briggs as Vice Chairman of the Council.
And have we got a seconder for that nomination?
I'd like to second that nomination. Thank you, Chairman.
Are there any other nominations? Councillor Porter.
Thank you. I'd like to nominate councillor David Harrison, please.
Is there a seconder to, for David Harrison's nomination?
Yes, Chairman, it would be great pleasure to second David Harrison.
Councillor Wade.
Thank you.
Now, at this stage, we need to take a vote.
So I have to say those in favour of councillor Briggs, then we'll count them all. Those in favour of councillor Harrison, we'll count them all, then you can decide.
We'll do this by a show of hands. So can I have all those in favour of councillor Anne Briggs being the Vice Chairman? And could I have a show of hands in support of councillor David Harrison? Keep your hands up. And I, I'm pleased to tell you that councillor Anne Briggs has been elected as my Vice Chairman. Okay. Now, my next duty as the incoming Chairman is to promote a vote of thanks for councillor Stalard, who I think has done a tremendous job. She's going to be a very, very hard act to follow. We live in times that funding is difficult, but she's done a first-class job in ensuring that she's got around the whole of the council and, as she pointed out, focused on heritage, which is really important to Hampshire. So I hope you'll be prepared to give her a vote of thanks for her work during the year. And now, moving on, we have the next election, and that is for the Leader and Cabinet. And first of all, the election of the Leader. And I would like to invite nominations for the Leader of Hampshire County Council.
Thank you, Chairman. I should like to propose councillor Adams King.
Is there a seconder for councillor Adams King?
Thank you, Chairman. I have pleasure in seconding councillor Adams King's nomination.
And could I have a vote in favour of councillor Adams King becoming the new Leader of the Council? Are there any other nominations? My apologies. My apologies. Councillor House, have you got any other nominations? No. And are there, as there are no other nominations, can I have a vote in favour of councillor Adams King being the Leader of the Council? And that is carried with a substantial majority. Congratulations, councillor Adams King. And can I invite you, as your first duty Leader, to confirm the members of your Cabinet?
Thank you very much, Chairman. And yes, I'd like to confirm the members of my new Cabinet. Deputy Leader and Executive Member for Younger Adults and Health and Wellbeing is councillor Jan Warwick. The Executive Lead for Adult Social Care and Public Health is councillor Liz Fairhurst. The Executive Member for Hampshire 2050, Climate Change, Culture, Partnerships and Corporate Services, she's going to be very busy, is councillor Zoe Huggins. Executive Lead Member for Children's Services, councillor Roz Chad. Executive Member for Education, councillor Steve Foster. Executive Member, Executive Lead Member for Universal Services, councillor Kirsty North. And the Executive Member for Highways and Waste, councillor Lulu Baumann. Thank you, John.
It's got Tonya Craig, I don't know what that is. Declaration of Interest, members. I will read out the normal paragraph associated with that. All members who believe they have a disposable pecuniary interest in any matter to be considered at the meeting must declare that interest and, having regard to Part Three, Paragraph 1.5 of the County Council's Members' Code of Conduct, leave the meeting while the matter is being discussed, save for the exercising any right to speak in accordance with Paragraph 1.6 of the code. Furthermore, all members with a personal interest in a matter being considered at the meeting should consider having regard to Part Five, Paragraph Four of the code, whether such interest should be declared. And have regard to Part Five, Paragraph Five of the code, consider whether it is appropriate to leave the meeting while the matter is discussed, save for exercising any right to speak in accordance with the code. Moving on to Item Six, the minutes of the previous meeting. Can I confirm those meetings? Have any members got any points to raise from them? That's the meeting on the 22nd of February of this year. Okay, are they approved? Thank you very much. Right, shall I sign those? And I confirm that there are no items, coming on to Item Seven, I confirm that there are no deputations on this occasion. Item Eight is my incoming Chairman's remarks. And first of all, I would like to thank you all for voting for me as your Chairman of Hampshire County Council. It's a great honour, and I will do my very best to uphold the good name of the council, which I take very seriously. Thank you all for your support. Having said that, I think I've been rather out-trumped by the Prime Minister yesterday. And what's going on in this chamber is obviously of rather less importance than what is going to happen over the next few weeks. All I can assure you is by the time we meet for our next council meeting in July, we will have a new government. Whether or not it is a Liberal Democrat government is another matter. And I'd like to thank both councillor Adams King and councillor Warwick for sponsoring me and seconding me. And in so doing, I'd like to congratulate him and councillor Warwick on becoming Leader and Deputy Leader of our great council. And also, congratulations to Anne Briggs, becoming Vice Chairman. I'm certain she will assist me in every way during my year of office. I've got two new members to welcome, councillor Joanne Burton and councillor Malcolm Wallace. Welcome to you both to Hampshire County Council. I'd also like to mention the two recently resigned or retired members of our council, Hugh Lumby. I'm certain you would agree with me that we should send our best wishes as he fights that very difficult disease. And I'd also like to thank councillor Sean Woodford for not only what he has achieved in this council, but also as the leader of Faram for a quarter of a century. He has a personal style, which is not always to everybody's liking. But nobody can in any way say that he has not been an effective and a very competent and experienced politician. And he will be certainly missed by many for that competence and that ability. So Sean, I'm sorry you're no longer involved in public works of councillor, of a councillor nature, but we do send your, our thanks to you for all you've done, both in Faram and for the County Council. And I'd also like to pass on my thanks to my successor as Leader and next predecessor, Rob Humby. I worked with him very closely indeed during the Covid crisis. I worked with him very closely indeed during the Covid crisis, and I couldn't have hoped for a better individual to be my deputy leader. He did an excellent job then, and he had a very hard job as leader, as we all know, during what were incredibly difficult times with cuts in expenditure. So I'd like to thank him for all his work he has done for both the councillor's leader and when he was deputy leader previously. And I'd also like to thank Roz Chad for all the work she did when she was deputy leader. And I'm delighted to see her back in the cabinet, following the role that she had previously and did so well previously, and I'm certain she's going to enjoy it in the future. And finally, councillor Edward Heron, who has stepped down today as a cabinet member, and I want to thank him for all the work he's done, both locally in the New Forest where we both live, but more specifically for this council during his time on it and in the cabinet. Thank you, Edward. Now, I believe at this point in the proceedings, it's customary for the incoming chairman to give a few insights into their background and the aspirations they have for the coming year. You'll be pleased to hear I'm going to be relatively brief. You all know that I was in the Royal Air Force and I was a pilot for a total of 40 years, both in the regular and the reserves. And then after that, I worked for John Lewis as a senior manager before entering Parliament for 10 years, and then leaving Parliament following the last Tory tsunami. I leave it hanging in the air. I ran the Royal Aeronautical Sarge as the chief executive for 12 years, and I thought that was where I would retire. However, an honorary older one, who many of you know, Patricia Banks, persuaded me to get re-involved in politics and encouraged me to stand as a county councillor 15 years ago, and I'm still just about here now, certainly for another year, hopefully. What's my theme? Well, I don't actually have a theme for this year, but I do have priorities. Many of you know my interest in the environment, going back to my days on the Select Committee, when I formed together with others the Parliamentary Environment Group, the All-Party Group. But the environment does go beyond climate change, and whilst we all must strive towards net zero in 2050, and I'm certain that our first councilie-councillor, who's a member of the Green Party, will be pushing that agenda very hard indeed. Having said that, regardless of what we manage in this country, the fact is we have climate change with us, and therefore we must also be resilient and do those things to protect people and the fauna and flora in our county against the worst effects of climate change, notably flooding, notably clean water, which is an issue that is very prominent at the moment, and indeed coastal defences. And perhaps I should declare an interest, as my house is a bare 50 metres from the coast of Milford-on-Sea. So I will try during the year to make certain that we raise the profile of those things the county are doing and those things that are going on in our county that recognise the consequences of climate change and the way we protect people and everything else in the county against them. The second priority I've got, which won't surprise you, and that's the military. We have more military personnel, which includes families, veterans and reservists in Hampshire than any other county, amounting to between 10 and 15% of our population. And we're the only county which has significant numbers of all three services. They are therefore an important ingredient in the life of this county, and I want to ensure that during my year, that is recognised in every way. And finally, one of the problems I had when I was leader is that Covid occurred very soon after I took over. And as a result, I spent an awful lot of time looking at a screen, or indeed two or even three screens at the same time. And I never really got out to see the county and what we do as a county council outside Winchester, and I hope to put that right during my time as your chairman. Now, I think that's enough about what I'm going to do in my past, but I just want to say a few words about what's been going on over the last period that I haven't been responsible for, but things that we should recognise that we have done or been involved with. First of all, corporate services, and I think it's fitting that we should mention that this month is the 10th anniversary of the Integrated Business Centre. The IBC provides HR, finance and procurement services to ourselves, plus six other partners, and more than 750 schools. And that really is the important bit, because that allows us to have good experience and it allows us to share the costs of development of the IBC with the other partners that we have. I'm sure you will agree that this is a significant achievement and will recognise with me that it is through the support of the excellent enabling services such as this that our frontline staff can remain focused on the services users who need us most. Second thing I'd like to mention, and indeed it's just been mentioned by the outgoing chairman, and that is St Barb's Museum and Art Gallery in Limington. It has been selected as the South East Regional Winner in the Department for Education's Holiday Activities and Foods Awards of 2024. And these foods awards are commissioned by our council, and St Barb's has been delivering holiday activities for Hampshire since 2021. As a regional winner, St Barb is now invited to the National Awards Ceremony at the House of Commons on the 17th of June, and I presume that's still going to go ahead, where excellence will be celebrated and the national winner unveiled from the pool of regional recipients. And that completes my report, or my first report, so I now like to hand over to councillor Nick Adams King for his first report. Councillor House.
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt, but if we do this in tribute, I think it would be quite helpful if we had other tributes from around the chamber. I think we were all, I think, totally moved by councillor Hugh Lumby at his final meeting of the county council before the election, and the fact that he maintained his good humour in such a difficult time was, I think, absolutely remarkable, and I found it inspirational. And I went up and had a conversation with him after the meeting, as I'm sure lots of other people did, but it really was absolutely amazing. So we all wish him as best good wishes as are possible. There was reference to Shaun Woodward. Shaun and I led adjoining adjacent boroughs between us for his 25 years. He's a newcomer, 30 years in at Eastleigh. And you're right to talk about his special style. One thing that wasn't mentioned, however, was his chairing of the Partnership for Urban Southampton Partnership for Southampton for 20 years, where he remarkably achieved cross-party consensus with no votes in 20 years, including the leadership of the county council, Portsmouth City Council and its various political guises, and Southampton City Council in their various political guises. And that was actually, I think, worthy of note. But I also want to pay tribute to Rob Humby this morning. Rob took over the leadership of the county council at a very difficult time for local government across the country. And it's not surprising, and it's not a failure of his, that he wasn't able to solve local government's financial chaos. It will be electorate on the 4th of July that have the ability to solve local government's financial chaos, and let's bring that on. But Rob did try really hard. He also tried really hard to work across the aisle and worked closely and involved and engaged the opposition members. And again, not just the leaders either, all the members. I know that Nick Adams King has said he'll do exactly the same thing, and I hope that's a tradition that Rob Humby started, and I hope that we will take that forward into the future under future leadership of the county council. Let's also welcome Nick to his role. There's something quite interesting going on here. This council has now had four Tory leaders in just over five years. Where have we heard that elsewhere? I wonder. But I also wanted just, something just clicked in my mind as I rose there, that we had councillor Perry for four years as leader. Was it six? Okay, well, I miscounted that, I thought it was four. Councillor Mans for three years, councillor Humby for two years. Welcome to your year, Nick.
Thank you, councillor House. Have any other members want to make tribute or comments before we move on? Councillor Harvey.
Thank you, Chairman. I too would like to pay tribute to Hugh. Having been through my husband in the same position, I know what's ahead of him, and that's really, really hard. I think he showed a great deal of his measure of the person that he really is by coming here and speaking like he did at the last full council, I thought was amazing. Also, to congratulate Nick on his appointment as leader. I'm sure that we've all had lots of dealings with Nick. He's been amazing to help us with all the problems that we've had, and I appreciate that. And to Rob, who kept us all informed, and that was very, very a good thing for us all. So thank you to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Harvey. Any other comments at all? Councillor Philpott.
After councillor Taylor, because she was first.
Obviously, it goes without saying, I'd like to thank everybody who has stood as a councillor, a leader or a cabinet member who are now standing down. Public life and work in public life is robust, difficult, relentless, and the rewards are not as much as we would all hope for, but when they come, then they're nice, and we don't get as many brown paper bags as people like to accuse us of either, except for my ones tend to have a rock cake in. So thank you to everybody who's given that public service, but I'd also like to give my personal thanks to director Graham Allen, who will be leaving us shortly as well in his retirement, because he has done a fantastic job also as a public servant for the council over a long period of time in an area of work that is incredibly difficult, and I congratulate Jess Hutchins on assist replacement, and I hope that they will continue to work really hard and serve the council well.
Councillor Alan Dowd.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on your appointment as chairman of the council. I'm sure it's a great privilege, and I'm sure you will serve well in the 12 months. I would also, because this is an opportunity to speak at any time probably, I would also like to thank the previous chairman, because she was the only chairman to thank me for having short questions, and so I appreciate that. I would also like to pay tribute to Rob Humby, because of course, the financial situation of the county council is pretty, I would use the word dire, and he did his best to try and get more money from this government, and of course, he didn't achieve it. And it's a bit of a poisoned chalice for Nick, I'm sure, but I also want to take this opportunity, Nick, to actually reprimand you. You've dropped me in it, and I'm sure some other councillors, because your use of Facebook with putting out all the weather road closures, et cetera. In North Battersea, I've had a series, because I'm not a Facebook user, I only read them, I don't send messages like yourself. And of course, Patrick Blogs, he's down the front there, I hope you're listening, Patrick, because the situation at the moment is pretty drastic in North Battersea with the blockages and the complaints I'm getting. Nick was getting them, and of course, they should have gone to him as the executive member for universal services, but he passed them on to me because he said, you're the local member. And so, Patrick, please try and sort out North Battersea, otherwise there'll be another resignation, it'll probably be mine. But can I also congratulate Jan Warwick? Jan, she was close next in the division to me, and on occasions, we've had to work together, and we've achieved it, and I did congratulate her, because of course, we all heard this news about you, Nick, and Jan well before this full council, which normally we hear. But congratulations to you too. Thank you.
Councillor Steve Philpott.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. First Hugh Lumby, if I may, and just to let members know, I dropped Hugh a line to wish him all the best, and he responded, so I'm going to read, a bit naughty, I'm going to read a little bit of his reply, so just for a moment, shut your eyes and pretend this is Hugh speaking, and I think you don't have to use much imagination. He said, "I'm missing the county, mostly the people and the collegiality." Brackets, "Is that a word? Spell check says no. What does it know?" And it's odd, having been involved, to be gone, but there are benefits, not receiving a load of complaints being one. So far, coping well, even though the voice has gone. I start my new role as a public servant on the 1st of July, which I'm looking forward to. Just spent the weekend sailing on the Solent without mishap or rain, so that was a first. So as you can see, Hugh hasn't lost his sense of humour at all, and I think he'll be absolutely chuffed to know that everybody has said such lovely things about him, because he's a lovely man. May I also, Chairman, just say a couple of words about Shaun Woodward, because it may surprise people to know, I've probably, probably known Shaun longer than anybody else in this chamber, or pretty much, and we go back to 1979. Now, I know I probably don't look old enough, and Shaun definitely, definitely doesn't look old enough, and I have to say, what an absolutely outstanding politician and public servant Shaun's been over all that time. So I think it would be wrong for me, having known him for the best part of 45 years, not to say a few kind words about him, because I think he's been an inspiration to many people, certainly in Farham, where he is actually a legend. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
See anyone else who wants to speak on this subject? So I think we can now move on to the leaders' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So bear with me, this is a little bit of a long one, sorry. I'd like to echo the chairman's thanks to councillor Stalard for her chairmanship of Hampshire County Council over the last 12 months. As you'll have heard from her speech today, and indeed witnessed in the last year, Patricia has been a dedicated and extraordinarily hard-working chairman. Representing the county council at numerous high-profile events and civic occasions, she's devoted considerable time, energy and enthusiasm to the promotion of Hampshire's heritage, a cause that has long been her passion. Indeed, I was delighted to be with her at one of her last engagements at the Hampshire Archives and Records Office, and if you've not been there, go, it's the most amazing place. At county council meetings, she's kept us all in line and to time. I have to say, it's reminded me, just on the odd occasion, of possibly being like, being back at school in assembly, but that's no bad thing, and it's been no easy feat to accomplish, and probably unsurprising, given Patricia's past profession. Patricia, thank you for your service, you've been a fantastic chairman. And... Patricia, thank you for your service, you've been a fantastic chairman, and good luck to you as well, Keith. So, I'd like to welcome councillor Mans to the position of incoming chairman, and councillor Briggs to the position of incoming vice chairman, and I look forward to working with you both in the coming months. The chairman's office has now moved to the same corridor as the leaders' office, so we're now neighbours, and we'll be seeing quite a lot of one another, I'm sure. Indeed, I'll be popping around for a cup of sugar, I'm sure the chairman feels overjoyed by that prospect. I'd like to say a warm welcome to councillor Burton and to councillor Wallace, following your election to the county council earlier this month. You'll find us a friendly bunch, and I very much hope you'll enjoy your time as members of this council. I hope they don't mind, I would also like to say a few words in tribute to their extraordinary predecessors. Firstly, Sean Woodward. I'd absolutely echo Keith's comments. I've spent eight years on Bush-ish, and Sean has been an amazing chairman of that. Sean retired from frontline politics after 38 years of outstanding service to local government in Hampshire. 19 years as a Hampshire county councillor, and 25 years as leader of Faram. A career in politics spanning 38 years, nearly as long as Stephen's known him. Nearly two-thirds of which he's served as a council leader, and that's a phenomenal achievement. I'd like to thank Sean for his magnificent service to the residents of Sarasbury, to Faram, and of Hampshire as a whole, and wish him a very happy retirement. Secondly, Hugh. I'm not sure I can quite match the tributes that have been given in this chamber, but he only served three years on the county council, but I've known him for longer, we've been around at various meetings for quite some time. He's widely recognised as an effective and hardworking councillor who is devoted to the Meon Valley Division and his constituents. In his final contribution to county council in February, Hugh represented his constituents with determination, bravery, and humour. I know he was moved by the reaction and comments he received afterwards, and no doubt will be again today. On behalf of Hampshire County Council, I send our very best wishes to Hugh and his family. I'd like to also welcome a new leader of the Labour Group, councillor Taylor and the deputy leader councillor Tustane. Congratulations, Kim and Jackie, and thanks to Alex for your three years of service as group leader. Kim, Jackie and I know one another well, already, we can occasionally be seen in the middle of roundabouts together. And so, I look forward to working with you both, as indeed I do Keith and Andy. It is your role as the opposition to challenge us, the administration. That is absolutely right, but I feel passionately that none of us here entered politics to do harm. We only disagree about the ways in which we can do good. I've described my leadership style already as collegiate and cooperative, I mean that, and I look forward to working collaboratively with you all. Even I know that sometimes you might decide to be a little naughty around election time, Jackie. We did sort it. Finally, I'd like to pay tribute to the former leader councillor Humby, and to the deputy leader councillor Ross Chad. They've steered the council through two intensely difficult years. Rob stands down knowing he has changed Hampshire County Council for the better. We owe him a huge vote of thanks, not just for his sacrifice and hard work of the last two years as leader, but for his many years of service to the people of Hampshire. So, I'd like to update members on action taken by the county council as a result of the resolution on Prostate Cancer UK's Boys Need Bins campaign, which was passed in September last year. I'm pleased to confirm that the county council will shortly add sanitary bins to the male toilets in our five country parks, in libraries, outdoor centres, and the office buildings used by staff. Talking of offices, the county council has undertaken a review of our office accommodation to understand the opportunities for further cost reductions, and ensure that we continue to make best use of our assets and buildings. As a result of the review, the county council identified three sites in Winchester that can be released. Property on our Monarch Way site was placed on the market in April, the Three Minsters House and Four Chimneys family centre buildings will be marketed later this year. These buildings will then close to staff. Services run from the three sites will be relocated to other county council buildings in Winchester, with the recent works to Elizabeth II Court set to be completed this summer. So, you'll be glad to know, no more drafty coffees, everybody. This form is part of our commitment to consider the way by which we use our buildings more flexibly to meet the future needs of the organisation, whilst identifying significant opportunities to deliver savings and generate capital receipts. A couple of words about the post-LEP arrangements. On the 1st of April, the functions of local enterprise partnerships covering the county council geography were officially transferred to the county council. I'd like to thank everyone who supported the Enterprise M3 LEP and Solent LEP to help drive investment in Hampshire and bring local partners together over the last decade. I'm delighted that the county council now have the opportunity to use the transferred functions to enhance our economic development, skills, and business support roles in Hampshire. We are currently in the process of jointly establishing our new governance, including developing a single joint leaders' board to ensure the involvement of every district council in the county. We will also have a new Hampshire Prosperity Partnership Board. This board will bring together representatives from local government, education, and business to help inform the county council's decisions in relation to economic development and skills, and ensure the best outcomes for residents and businesses across Hampshire. The first set of appointments to the prosperity board was approved on Tuesday, and I look forward to progressing further appointments in the coming weeks to complete our full representation across the areas of local government, higher, and further education. I'm pleased that there's been a great deal of enthusiasm from Hampshire businesses for the new partnership arrangements. I'm looking forward to attending the first meeting of the Hampshire Partnership Board in June, and working closely with members of this board and the joint leaders' board in the coming months to further develop our plans for boosting economic growth, innovation, and skills. I welcome the announcement from central government that 8.45 million pounds of reallocated HS2 funding has been awarded to the county council to help us accelerate the delivery of highways improvement schemes across Hampshire. The 19 projects that will benefit from this funding have already been shared with the Department for Transport, they're also listed on our website. The Secretary of State for Transport visited Hampshire last week, and we've shown two of these projects, both in Basingstoke, at Kempshot Lane, and St Michael's Road, and I know councillor Reed was in attendance as well. I'm also pleased that the county council highway surface treatments programme will continue this year, with sites already identified for strengthening the programme, which will further support the county council's Stronger Roads pledge. There, we are investing an additional 22.5 million pounds into our road network to repair potholes and other defects. 15 million of which will be spent this financial year in order to take advantage of the supply capacity we have negotiated. I need to say a big thank you to the frontline highways teams for all the excellent work they do to keep our roads safe and serviceable, especially given the challenges caused by the storms earlier this year, and also prolonged wet weather over the course of the winter and spring. Those chaps are out there in all weathers, and they do a fantastic piece of work for us, and so, I would encourage you to say hello if you pass them by. I'd also like to encourage Hampshire residents and road users to keep using the county council's website and our Hance mobile app to report potholes and other road defects, so that we can log them and we can fix them. If you don't tell us about them, everybody, we can't do anything about them. So, do please encourage your residents to do that. I'm looking forward to what will be a truly momentous and special occasion, the 80th anniversary of D-Day on the 6th of June. In recognition of the important role that several Hampshire locations played in connection to D-Day, the county council will host events in Leap Country Park and Royal Victoria Country Park to give residents the chance to make this extraordinary chapter in the UK's history. I will have the great honour of lighting a beacon on Leap Cliff Top on the evening of the 6th of June to mark the place where thousands of men bravely departed our shores for Normandy. The beacon will be part of a network of illuminations to symbolise the period of peace that followed the darkness of war. There will be commemorative events taking place in both the country parks during the first two weeks of June, and I encourage you all, residents and visitors alike, to come along and pay tribute to the service and sacrifice of the Allied troops on D-Day. Hampshire is a wonderful county, and I'm deeply honoured and humbled to have been selected by my absolutely brilliant colleagues as the leader of the Conservative group, and by you all as the leader of the council. I'm fortunate to have an incredible group who have a wealth of experience, knowledge, and enthusiasm. Among these individuals, there is no one more talented than councillor Jan Warwick, whom I delighted was chosen by my colleagues as our group deputy leader, and whom I today appoint deputy leader of the council. I'm fully aware of the immense challenges we face, and I commit to working tirelessly to overcome them. However, we must not let these challenges deter us from promoting the fantastic work that the county council does. We must continue to innovate and find new ways of working to better serve Hampshire's 1.4 million residents, making their lives better, their journeys safer, and ensuring they receive the help they need when they need it. Hampshire County Council, in common with most local authorities, faces an unprecedented financial challenge. But let me say this clearly, Hampshire County Council is not going bust. We have a legal responsibility to provide essential services, and we cannot refuse support. This includes social care for older people, support for those with disabilities, the care of vulnerable children, and school transport for those who qualify. These services are rightly provided free of charge to those who need them, but they do come at a significant cost, and that cost is only limited by the number of people whom they qualify. We face a recurring budget shortfall of 132 million by the next financial year. To address this, we conducted the Future Services public consultation from January to March this year, asking people from across Hampshire their views on proposed changes and reductions to local services. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to the over 14,400 residents who responded. Let me say to them, we have read your views, your feedback has been invaluable, offering fantastic insights, ideas, and challenges. I also want to say that we have heard you, and we will be acting on the items that you wish to us to look at. Before decisions are made in July, we must follow a thorough democratic process. Member task and finish groups will review the consultation documents and high-level findings reporting to the county council select committees. These committees will then review the results and make recommendations to Cabinet, who will collectively decide the way forward. So, let me say again to our residents, we have heard you, and we are working hard to ensure that your views are reflected in the decisions we will be making. To our dedicated employees, I want to say how much we value your commitment and professionalism. You have shown incredible dedication in really challenging times, and I'm grateful for your continued and excellent service. I'm an optimist, and I'm optimistic about the future of Hampshire County Council. Under my leadership, we will strive to be an efficient, caring, innovative, business-friendly council. We will care for our environment, we will tackle climate change, and promote the work we do to protect our most vulnerable residents. To our residents, I promise that we will always remember it is your money we spend. To our businesses, I promise we will support you, recognising you are the backbone of our county. And to our most vulnerable residents, accessing our social care services, and to those young people in our care, we will continue to protect and support you. We can and will change this council for the better. We can and will make it work more effectively for the people of Hampshire, we will find innovative solutions, work efficiently, and maximise the contribution from our assets. Together, we will deliver a positive future for Hampshire. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We now move on to questions, item 10. I just remind members that there is a 30-minute total for this particular item, and any questioner who is not in attendance, normally a written response will be sent. I don't think we have any of those today. I will obviously invite the relevant executive member to respond, and the only other point I'd make is, when we get to the, just towards the end of the 30 minutes, if we started a question, we'll finish it, and we'll finish the answer as well. So, the first question is from councillor Juliet Henderson to the executive member for countryside and regulatory. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you, chairman. Motorised driving on our byways open to all traffic, known as boats, does more than damage the surfaces. It also pollutes the air, damages surrounding vegetation and farmland, destroys tranquility, disturbs wildlife, and discourages walkers, cyclists, and horse riders from enjoying the national parks. Non-motorised users often report that they feel that they are in danger from vehicles. Does the cabinet member support my view that the use of boats for motorised vehicles needs to be reconsidered by Hampshire County Council, and that restriction could be put in place like those used in other counties?
Countryside and regulatory.
Thank you very much, chairman, and congratulations on your appointment. Thank you, councillor Henderson, for raising this question and for your obvious passion for the special landscapes of Hampshire and the protection of our natural environment. I would like to first acknowledge the hard work of my predecessor, councillor Oppenheimer, for his work and commitment tackling the harm caused to boats by motorised vehicles. I know he has done a great deal to get us where we are, and I know you will join me in thanking him for his work. A paper was tabled at the November Regulatory and Executive Member Decision Day to approve a review of the current management of byways open to all traffic boats. I appreciate your wider concerns linked to tranquility and air quality from vehicle users on the byway network. One thing we should be clear on is that in law, motorised vehicles do have a legal right to use boats, and taking someone's public rights should not be taken lightly. However, this review of byways policy and management procedures will consider what options are available to the council and how boats are managed in the future. From the briefing that I have received, we are essentially going to proactively manage the routes, seeking to move from a fix-it-when-it's-broken approach to a more preventative position. And assessments will include conservation impact, safety, and the sustainability of the surface itself. I know you'll be following the review closely, and I'm happy to keep you updated.
Thank you, councillor North. I thank my colleague Russell Oppenheimer for organising a visit by officers to fiveways in Upton Gray. Local farmers are keen for winter closures for motorised vehicles to be put in place, deterring off-roaders who often travel considerable distance to use our boats and poachers. Can my colleague look at restricting access during winter months when the surfaces are at their most vulnerable?
Councillor North.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Henderson, we will review each route and assess how they're best managed, and there may be a case for a period of closure to protect the surface and help ensure that the route has time to recover, particularly over the winter months and in wet weather. So, I will discuss this with officers over the summer as we undertake that review and keep you informed of progress.
Second question is from councillor Stephen Reed.
Chairman, can the executive member please inform me when the Broadmere Road area in my division is likely to be adopted?
That used to be me, Mr. Chairman, and I'm very sorry, everybody, that it's me talking again, but given that Lulu's had about 10 minutes in post, it's probably fairer if I answer some of the old US questions, if that's okay. Broadmere Road is part of a historic Section 38 application, which has had many issues to overcome. Much has been progressed to date, with a few items still to be resolved. The adoption is being actively progressed by the developer and the authority, but it is not possible to provide a timescale in which this will be achieved, I'm afraid. The outstanding items pertain to street lighting and legal work around securing easements required for drainage assets in land which was transferred to other parties. As there may be multiple agreements and easements with other parties in order to overcome the issue, the timescales are in large part outside of the control of the authority. We do have an allocated officer working closely with the developer now to ensure all issues are resolved as quickly as they can be. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councillor Reed, do you have a supplementary?
Very much welcome, being Very much welcome, being given the name and phone number of the allocated officer, because the person with whom I was dealing before retired, and there seemed to be a bit of a hiatus following his going, so would, first of all, would that be possible? The second point is that I thought the easements issues had been resolved because there was one particular where a neighbour's wall had to be moved, and that was done. And Taylor Wimpy, the developers, had been doing a lot of work in that area, and I thought we were pretty well there. In fact, the predecessor, who's now left, had said that he was aiming to get it done by the end of last year. So the question is, could I please have a close conversation with the new officer? Because I think there may be some confusions here, possibly on my part, possibly on the officer's part, but I would like to understand the situation in detail.
Yes, councillor Reed, I'm sure that all of that can be resolved with a conversation between you and the officer that's dealing with it, and I'm sure that we can arrange for that to happen, because your local knowledge and your knowledge of the history of how everything's gone through is probably providing some soft information there that would be of use to him as well. So we can arrange that, I'm sure.
Councillor Tree.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment today, and to everyone else who's been appointed, I wish you all the very best of luck. My question, I understand, is actually to the executive lead member for 2050, as this matter falls under. No, sorry, apologies, it's my second question that's under Hampshire 2050, you've got off the hook. My first question is to councillor North as executive member for Universal Services. So I refer to the potential decision to close the Borden Household Waste Recycling Centre in my division, which I wrote to the leader, the now former leader, about on 18th of March. I have presented Hampshire County Council with a petition signed by over 2,500 Hampshire residents, with 1,846 signatures from local addresses in Whitehill, Borden, Limford, Lippock, Liss, Gretum, Headley, and Parsfield. What can I say back to my fellow residents who feel so let down that Hampshire County Council would even consider closing this facility? And how can you reassure residents of Hampshire County Council's intentions? Thank you.
Leader.
Me again. So councillor Tree, thank you for your question. The Future Services Consultation, which included proposals regarding household waste recycling centre provision, closed on the 31st of March, as you know. The results were published on the 8th of May. The findings will be carefully considered alongside other relevant factors, including operational, financial, policy, and legal considerations, as plans are drawn up for future service delivery. The county councillor task and finish groups will shortly review the consultation documents and process, receive the high-level findings from the consultation and report to the county council's cross-party select committees. Select committees will then review the consultation results and make recommendations to Cabinet as a whole, and we will then take a collective final decision. But I would refer you to my comments that I made in the leader's update a few minutes ago. We are really grateful for all of the feedback that we've received. We're grateful to you for the petition that you've given us, as we have from other people, from many other sites. We have heard what people say, and we will be doing the very best we can to ensure that their concerns and their aspirations are met.
Councillor Reed, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Chairman, and sorry, councillor Adams King, I thought you were off the hook, but not quite yet. Does Hampshire County Council have any evidence that closing household waste recycling centres does not increase fly tipping, given the fact that this cost is then borne by the district and borough councils? Thank you.
The short answer to that is that we do have evidence in the respect that we know what has happened elsewhere in the country when household waste recycling centres have been closed. I am fortunate enough to come from a borough where we actively pursue fly tippers, and we have, in Test Valley, an excellent history of successful prosecutions of people who fly tip. And what I can tell you that we have learnt from that is that the people who take their rubbish to HWRCs are not the people who fly tip, and they will not be the people who would fly tip if that were to be the case. So the people who we find fly tip the most and fly tip most regularly are those people who are unlicensed waste carriers, who trick people into giving them their waste and then dump it because they know that they can't access waste recycling or waste centres, be they council or be they privately run. So I think we have to be really quite clear with people. I completely understand there is a concern, because that's exactly where your thought process goes if we're going to be closing the HWRCs. But what I can promise you is that wherever that has happened elsewhere in the country, there has not been a significant increase in fly tipping, and that comes from a very different source of people who try to avoid the correct process they should be following to transfer waste and take people's money to get rid of their waste in an appropriate way. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
For councillor Jackie Porter.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your new appointment. What percentage of local residents is needed to support a change to a speed limit in a village or community and to consider a one-way system on a village road that's turned into a rat-run?
I think this is the leader, is it?
Thank you very much, councillor Porter, for your question, and congratulations. Yes, I'm me again. This, there is no rigid requirement as such. Instead, the county council looks to see if there have been any history of collisions that indicate an emergency, an emerging safety issue. For a long time now, the county council has been very clear about the huge budget pressures it is facing. This has emphasised the need to prioritise the limited funding available for traffic management to locations where there is the greatest scope to treat the causes of injury accidents, with a corresponding reduction in non-safety-led traffic management. We are, however, pleased to offer a community-funded initiative which enables us to provide some of the non-statutory-led traffic management measures that our reduced resources can no longer offer. Speed limits and one-way systems are outside the scope of this, but the recently agreed policy position for 20 mile an hour speed limits does enable parish and town councils, as well as other groups, to request those where certain criteria are met and where the local communities are fully supportive of the measure. So effectively, in those areas, what we're looking for is an indication that the community have been consulted and the support is overwhelming.
Councillor Porter, have you a supplementary?
Thank you. These 20 mile an hour suggestions have been partly informed by the pilot scheme that was done several years ago. So a simple question, from that pilot scheme, are you confident that it's more effective to reduce speeds to 20 miles an hour without police support, or to set a clear 30 mile an hour limit that would be enforced by police monitoring?
That is indeed a very good question, councillor Porter. I think we should be clear about the 20 mile an hour zones. Setting a speed limit doesn't stop people speeding. And it is for, and the purpose of the 20 mile an hour policy is to allow communities to decide for themselves what they think they would like. One of the greatest benefits that we can bring in terms of looking at the way in which you manage speed is, of course, police involvement in enforcement, but also the rollout of the speed indicator devices that we've been doing, where there is a proven record of speeds reducing if you are showing people the speed at which they are going and shaming them effectively, embarrassing them as they realise that they are exceeding that limit. So there is a whole host, and there's a whole package of different measures that we can bring in, and I think it's a matter for us to try and offer as many as we can so that the communities can provide what they feel to be the best result, the best solution for them. I am in conversation with the Police and Crime Commissioner, or I was prior to becoming leader, around ways by which we can better link the police enforcement regime to our process of rolling out speed indicator devices and other measures. I think that's an important part of it, because ultimately, it's the police who get to prosecute people who speed and not the county council. But we certainly play a part in providing some of the infrastructure that can support that for them. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Question five, councillor Wallace.
Thank you, Chair. So on cue to the chairman's earlier comments, I have a question on progress towards net zero. The local transport plan, LTP4, that was accepted at the last council meeting, has a goal of reducing traffic in Hampshire by 10% by 2030. The local transport plan has been in draft for several years now. Please can you confirm what progress has been made towards this goal and what metrics are being used to track progress? Thank you.
And this will be answered by the executive member for Hampshire 2050 in Corporate Services.
That's me again. Councillor Wallace, thank you very much for your question, and Malcolm, you're very welcome to this council. I'd just like to reassure you that I don't answer every question, normally. There are other members of the Cabinet, and they will answer them, but it just happens that it's fallen to me again today. The LTP4 was agreed in February 2024 and made a commitment to develop a monitoring regime with indicators to be collected on a three- and five-year cycle. It also made a commitment to create a baseline from which to monitor progress. Our plan for monitoring is set out in Section 8.5 of the LTP document, which can be found on our website. As we are still in the early stages of the plan, we are now developing the implementation of the monitoring framework. As stated in that section, we expect traffic to be monitored using a combination of traffic levels, for which we will make use of some of the 300 traffic counters we have spread across the road network and modal split surveys. These will monitor the proportion of journeys made by bus, walking, and cycling compared to vehicle trips to give a clear appreciation of the effectiveness of local transport measures. The short answer is, we don't as yet, but we will do so. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Have you a supplementary, councillor Wallace? Question number six, councillor Tree.
Thank you, Chairman, and my question is to the executive member for Hampshire 2050, the leader again. I'll have to come up with a question for another member of the Cabinet next time, otherwise they're going to get bored. So my question relates to the Future Skills Centre in my division in Borden. So opened in 2017, the Borden Future Skills Centre is a 3.8 million Hampshire County Council facility that offered a wide range of specialist construction courses. Following the shock announcement from operator Basingstoke College of Technology that it will close, what commitments can the executive member make to ensure this remains as an educational facility to support the young people in our growing town? Thank you.
Just for a change, the leader.
Councillor Tree, thank you for your question. Do you please ask other people questions? It's a bit like this last time, if you remember, and I didn't get the chance because of the former chairman's excellent chairing of the council, just to ask other people to ask other things. In spring 2024, Basingstoke College of Technology announced that training provision would cease on the site from the end of this academic year. Whilst HCC owns the facility, the provision of education and training is wholly the responsibility of the provider. Students are able to continue with their programmes from the main college site, and all staff have been offered alternative employment at the college. The county council is in active dialogue with Basingstoke College, and we are awaiting formal notification of their intention to exercise the break laws in the lease, which would take effect from June 2025. The county council is committed to securing a viable and sustainable solution which meets the current and future skills needs of the local area. Officers are already in an informal dialogue with a number of prospective alternative providers, alongside engaging the district council before any formal process would commence to secure that provider. And so we are doing the best we can, Andy, and we are looking for somebody else to provide the same services on the site.
Councillor Reed, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Chairman. So thank you very much for the answer. I mean, both my questions today are around the theme of Hampshire County Council supporting our growing town. Will the executive member, councillor Adams King, commit to coming to Borden and looking round the Future Skills Centre at a mutually convenient time to understand personally what they do there and what the facility is all about? Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Tree, very happy to do that. I don't know what my diary looks like yet, I'm going to find out tomorrow, but if there's space, I do need to come to Borden because I need to come and come and visit it with you, so we'll find some time to do that.
That completes item 10, and the questions? Oh, sorry, Jackie Porter, sorry, you have another one, yes. Question seven, my apologies.
Thank you. And my question, I'm just going to start, first of all, by saying I am going to declare a non-prejudicial interest because I'm also a city district councillor for local plan in place, and I think it's relevant to this question. But obviously, it's non-prejudicial. So I wrote this on the day before the Junction Nine decision was due, but it hadn't come out yet, and I needed to submit the question. So now that the day for the M3 Junction Nine decision has been arrived, what actions will the county council take because the decision is not to build a new junction at the Carton Horses Junction? I think councillor Adams King will understand why I changed the question.
Leader.
Would you please explain why I'm going to answer it again? I promise you, all this is probably just about the last time I speak today, so you must be sick of me by now. So as you know, M3 Junction Nine improvement application was granted development consent by the Secretary of State on Thursday, the 16th of May. Despite the evidence submitted by the county council, which is a matter of public record, unfortunately and disappointingly, the examining authority and Secretary of State did not consider that mitigation was required for the Carton Horses Junction, and so the scheme remains unfunded until such time as another funding opportunity arises. Councillor Porter and I have met there, and we have talked previously about what funding opportunities there might be. I'm very happy that we take that conversation forward now that we have some clarity around this, at least we know where we are, I guess, and we can begin to talk then about the ways by which we can bring forward the plans that you and I have discussed, and I know that the highways officers have shared with you. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Porter, have you a supplementary?
I have, actually. Councillor Adams King has actually partially answered it, but we knew the poor safety record of the junction before the work to propose, to have Junction Nine was put forward, and the excuse then was not to make changes because we didn't know national highways plans, which were so long awaited. The council refused to agree the Statement of Common Ground with National Highways, which we appreciated in recognition of that, and the council has actually consulted on options. So my concern is, yes, even if we find the funding to do this, knowing the county's delay in managing these projects, what is the county's timetable to deliver the public, the changes that the public so desperately seek? Can we have any identification of timing that this would take, bearing in mind the junction's going to take about three years?
Leader. So I'm very happy to take that away and come back to you separately about it. The one thing that I would say is that as part of our conversations, the fact that the Carton Horses was not extended, that the Junction Nine scheme was not extended to include the Carton Horses, doesn't mean that we can't cooperate with National Highways over the construction of what we would like to do there to make the, to improve the junction. So let me take that away, and we can come back to you with what current thinking is. But you'll appreciate, I hope, that we've only had the decision just over a week ago, and as a consequence of that, it might take a little while before we can actually settle down to the phasing that National Highways are going to be undertaking and where we might fit into that programme in terms of the right time to undertake the junction improvements. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
I think that really does complete questions. So we move on to Part One, matters for decision, item 11, agenda item 11, formation of the Joint Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee regarding Frimley Park. And I invite the leader to present the report, invite questions, and I remind members to press their microphone button to join the queue to speak.
Sorry, I forgot I got to this bit as well. Thank you, Chairman. The council is asked to approve the actions of the chief executive in taking an urgent officer decision to enable the formation, terms of reference, and membership of a joint health overview and scrutiny committee to consider NHS proposals for a new hospital to replace Frimley Park Hospital. Work on a proposed new site has moved at pace, and it was therefore considered urgent to ensure the new committee could begin to meet in advance of this council meeting. could begin to meet in advance of this council meeting. Following the appointment of councillor Briggs as vice chairman of the council, a revised membership of the joint Hosk is proposed and included at item 13 on this agenda. I move the recommendations. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm sure I speak for all members in the Rushmore and Hart area whose constituents are... Despite all the important things the county council does, there's probably nothing more important than this issue, the provision of a new hospital for our area. So can I ask, will we as local members be proactively kept informed at every stage of what's happening with the redevelopment of Frimley Park? It's an issue our constituents will always want to know the latest on and it's something we need to be well informed. Thank you.
Leader.
Yes, councillor Collett, I'm sure that we can find ways by which we can do that. We obviously have the process of HASC and it's chaired by a local member for Frimley Park and indeed somebody who is one of the members of the joint overview and scrutiny committee for that. So I would leave it to Bill, I think, to find the best ways by which you can be kept informed. But I'm sure that's something that we can do around that to ensure that happens, yeah.
Can I then therefore have a vote on the recommendation on page 25 of item 11? Fine. Item 12, Corporate Parenting Board Terms of Reference, Update and Proposed Dissolution of the Children and Families Advisory Panel. I'd like to invite councillor Chad to present the report and then invite questions.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment. I'm happy to present this report to the council today and move the recommendations in the paper and also happy to take any questions.
Questions to councillor Chad? Debate? Are you all... Sorry. Councillor Heron.
Chairman, the only comment that I really would like to make, and I've made it in a number of other forums, is I really would like to take this opportunity to thank councillor Briggs for her work. And when you say work on the corporate parenting board, actually, of all those in my time understanding, the work of the board is but a tiny part of that work that is involved in being a meaningful contribution. And I have seen for myself and I have heard from many the work that councillor Briggs has done for that board and what in doing that she has done for those children that we have responsibility for. So I would just like to say again my thanks and welcome this report.
Thank you, councillor Heron. Councillor Porter.
Thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to speak on this one. This paper is not just about the terms of reference with the parenting board, which I fully endorse. The strength of that cannot be underestimated. We really must strengthen all of our resolve to act for every single child that's in care as if it were our own child or grandchild. I think if we think about what a child has to go through in order to be in care in the first place, let alone whilst they're in care, we realise how extremely serious it is for us to be the corporate parents and we must never forget that. So I think that strengthening that board can only be a good thing. And councillor Adams King, I know, knows all about that only too well. The second point, though, is the dissolution of the Children and Families Advisory Panel. Although it will always receive things to note rather than to make decisions on, and generally, I think all of us as councillors like to be at meetings where you're making decisions on things, it did inform us all very well about the ongoing challenges for the county council and the successes. And I have asked specifically that those become part of the member briefings because then even if people aren't in that member briefing because they can't make it for their time, it is recorded and it makes us all much more aware of what's going on. But as a result, we are asking very, very clearly that the 15 hours a year we get for scrutiny, because it's five meetings of about three hours a time, is really, really carefully spent and that we have ways of making those meetings much more efficient. And I know that councillor Chad shares that view. We want to make those meetings much more efficient so that we are genuinely scrutinising. As councillor Adams King said, it is our role to scrutinise. It's what keeps the council strong. That's the purpose of it. However big or small that scrutiny team is, it's important to have it there. And so I really urge the county council to think very seriously how we can make sure that those 15 hours a year of scrutiny, and it is just 15 hours, are very, very well spent. Thank you.
Councillor Henderson.
Thank you. I would definitely support all of councillor Porter's points she raises. I think one of the most important roles we of county councils have is our role as a corporate parent. The experience of our looked after children has to be really foremost in our minds. I just also wanted to talk a little bit about the dissolution of the Children and Families Advisory Panel. I'd like to thank councillor Mumalaneni for chairing it. But also just to say, there were elements of that panel that were really, really valuable and councillor Porter and I have really highlighted that any of those elements that really benefited members could either become part of members' briefings or somehow be incorporated in the corporate parenting board. But I do share your views, councillor Porter.
I don't see any other members who wish to speak. So could I ask councillor Chad to respond?
Thank you, Chairman. Absolutely taking on everything on board that everyone has said this morning. Steve and I have just had a quick, brief chat about other ways that we can improve on this as well. So I'd like to move the recommendations in the paper today.
And the recommendation is on page 39. Are you all in agreement? Thank you very much. Moving on to item 13, proportionality and appointments. Members, the report was published after the main agenda and is being considered as no urgent item due to the need for the council to approve its proportionality table to make the appointments required at the annual general meeting. This will be recorded in the minutes. You will find the report as a supplementary document on the agenda papers. Can I invite the leader to present the report?
Thank you, Chairman. As members will be aware, the council is required to review the proportionality table. The draft table before you is a result of full and detailed consultation with all the group leaders. The appointments that are proposed take into account changes in the draft table together with changes arising from the previous reports. I move the recommendations.
Any questions? Any debate? Are you happy to approve the report? Thank you very much. Item 14, Joint Health Overview and Scrutiny Committee, Hampshire Together, Revised Terms of Reference. And this is to consider the report and to invite the chairman, councillor Withers, to present it.
Thank you, Chair. Members, I should... I should assume that all members have read the report and therefore I'll just give you a summary of that report. In December 2020, the council established a joint health overview and scrutiny committee between Hampshire County Council and Southampton City Council regarding proposals by Hampshire Hospitals NHS Trust Foundation and local health commissioners affecting the provision of services from the hospitals in Winchester and Basingstoke. West Berkshire Council has now requested to join the joint committee as some of their population may use hospital services provided by Hampshire Hospitals. As an authority being consulted by the NHS on these proposals, they are entitled under regulations to take part in the joint committee. Following discussion of this request at the HASC meeting when it met on Tuesday this week, it is recommended that council agree to increase the membership of the joint committee to provide one seat to West Berkshire Council and to agree the revised terms of reference of this joint committee. I propose the recommendations be supported, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Withers. Any questions at all? Any debate? Are you happy to approve the creation of this new committee? Item 15, notice of motion. I won't go through the detailed analysis of the timing. I think probably most members know this. So can I just ask the proposer of this motion to read it out to the council?
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your appointment. Before I present the full motion, I just wish to include a proposed minor addition to recommendation B. I wish to insert, if applicable, after national parties to be inclusive to independent or unaffiliated groups. The proposed addition to recommendation B will read, the group leaders write to leaders of their representative national parties, if applicable, to request their support of the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign. I present to you the motion Debate Not Hate motion. I hope this motion continues the sentiment in the chambers today. The motion is supported by the LGA and 50 councils who have signed up to the motion, including Winchester City Council here in Hampshire. We are all aware of the increasing trend of abuse, intimidation and harassment that has become a disturbing norm in our political landscape. The normalisation of aggression and abusive behaviour against councillors and officers is not only unacceptable, but it undermines the very fabric of democracy. Our ability to represent our community should not affect our safety or our wellbeing. It can also significantly impact their families and the wider community. There is considerable volume of evidence of the impact abuse and personal attack and intimidation, including extreme incidents such as the murder of Joe Cox MP and Sir David Amis MP. To understand the impacts on local government and councillors, the LGA launched a call for evidence of abuse, intimidation of councillors in October 2021. This provides sabring and reflective read. The report notes that seven out of 10 councillors over a 12 month period have experienced either abuse, personal attack or intimidation. These experiences can be in the chamber, in the community, online, online pseudonyms, which, as the report states, have been normalised. I make the choices to keep myself and my family safe, such as not publicising my home address. If you have experienced unannounced visits to your doorstep at night, why home alone? Or indeed, your children also experiencing this, why home alone? You will understand why I make those choices. By passing this motion today, we acknowledge the Joe Cox Foundation and the LGA's Debate Not Hate reports and act upon the recommendation. In conclusion, let us remember that democracy and debate should be robust, lively, but also respectful. The council should take a zero tolerance approach to any form of language or action that risks compromising the safety and the wellbeing of elected members and the staff of this council. The proposed motion recommendations with the minor amendments therefore are, A, to sign up to the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign, which aims to raise awareness and the role of councillors in the local community, encourage healthy debate and improve the response to and support those in public life facing abuse and intimidation. That group leaders write to the leader of the retrospective national parties, if applicable, to request their support of the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign. C, the leader of the council writes to the minister of local government to ask for changes to legislation so that home addresses of councillors are not published by default. D, to work with the Hampshire and the Isle of Wight Police Crime and Commissioner to ensure that there is a clear and joined up mechanism for reporting threats and other concerns about safety of councillors and their families. E, that all councillors and officers are reminded of the process of how to report incidents of harassment and abuse. F, the security and wellbeing resources are made available to all councillors through the members portal and included as part of the 2025 Members' Induction Programme. I present the motion Debate Not Hate to members and colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Huggins. Are you all in agreement to begin with? No, 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 no. Are you all in agreement with a slight change to the original motion on the order paper? Who agreed that? Have you got a second for your motion? Councillor Chad.
Yes, Chairman, I'm happy to second this motion.
Do you want to speak now or do you reserve the right to speak later?
I'll reserve my right to speak later.
Thank you very much. Does anyone wish to speak on this motion? Councillor Glenn.
Thank you very much and thank you very much for bringing this motion forward. It's made us all think. I just really want to know, does this include what I would call continual criticism when we send our emails and copy people in, which we seem to spend an awful lot of our time doing these days, that getting continual criticism of your opinion and what you're doing, is that included in this? That's my question.
I think, yes, councillor, again, that can be answered at the end by the proposal of the motion when we've had the full debate. Councillor Drew.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and congratulations to everyone who's been elevated or elected today. And I'm very happy to support this motion. But frankly, it's only the tip of the iceberg. And if I may, I'd like to focus on the rest of the iceberg, if I may. And I'd like to set the matter in a wider context. 3,000 offensive tweets are sent to members of parliament every day. And I think that the most proliferous recipient is Diane Abbott. I have no truck with her policies, but it's frankly outrageous that we seem to be able to do so little to prevent these things happening. This is a threat to our democracy, but it gets worse. Only last week, Robert Fico, the Slovakian prime minister, was at an attempted assassination. Earl of Palmer, 1986, was assassinated in Sweden. Ronald Reagan, an attempted assassination in 1981. Here at home, Airi Neve in 1979 was blown up by IRA terrorists. A veteran of the Colditz Prison, he stood against neo-Nazis and not real Nazis at the time. Joe Cox, who's been mentioned, was killed and murdered by a neo-Nazi. Sir David Amis, an Islamic extremist back in 2021. Lastly, in June 1914, Franz Ferdinand Karl Ludwig Joseph Maria of Austria in Sarajevo. We know where that ended. And can I say to all our Liberal Democrat, Labour, Independent and Green colleagues, we are not the enemy. We are not the enemies. We are colleagues. Let me repeat that. Opposition, yes. We engage in important discussions and debate, but we are not each other's enemies. Ultimately, our enemies reside in Moscow, in Beijing, Pyongyang and Tehran. How we behave locally and nationally impacts on our enemy's success or otherwise. Support the motion and let's remember, we are all now in the spotlight. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Drew. Councillor Reed.
Thank you, Chairman. Just a brief point here. We're taking an initiative here today that I think will probably be unanimously supported. be unanimously supported across the chamber and rightly so. It's an important initiative, but it talks about Hampshire County Council only. Many of us, I'm not, but many of us are double hatters, and there are hundreds of district and borough and parish councillors across the county who would want to know what we are doing and who would probably be advised to adopt the same procedures as we do, so that there isn't one rule over there and a different rule over here. So I'm suggesting that when we adopt this later on, we also ask the officers to contact the districts, the boroughs and the parishes and say, we've taken this initiative, if you want to join in, it would be in everyone's interest to have a single code that everybody abides by.
Thank you, councillor Reed. Councillor Parker.
Thank you, Chairman. I think I started all this stuff fifty years ago in a slightly gentler age, where I was sitting as a councillor in the London Borough of Haringey and the member for the adjacent ward, the chap some of you may have heard of called Jeremy Corbyn. But we dealt with each other with respect. He was of a very different state of politics from me, but we were able to deal with each other on a civilised basis, as we do in this chamber, which is great. But we've now got the situation with social media. Councillor Drew mentioned three thousand tweets, aggressive tweets against members of Parliament. I suspect many of us have had the experience of being trolled on social media. And we're in a very different situation where people feel they have the right to attack people on a personal level because they don't choose to agree with our opinions. This is a democracy where we're all entitled to our own opinion, even councillor Collett, who's sitting there grinning at me, which is fine, and he's entitled to grin at me. That's totally appropriate. But we need to be properly respectful of each other in this chamber and outside, and I fully approve of this. I have never experienced, I have to say, any of these attacks myself, but I know of people that have, and I know of people that found it very distressing and it's got to stop, so I fully support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Parker. Councillor Donnelly.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I fully support this motion and everything that my colleagues have said. I just want to say, to pick up on something councillor Reed touched on, which is the many hundreds of parish councillors. I have quite a few parishes in my division, as colleagues will as well, and they're really on the frontline. They're volunteers, they give up their time, their energy, they're not paid. And at their level, it's not always a matter of redacting your address because everybody knows where you live. It's a small village, a small community. And so whilst I'm completely supportive of what we're doing, I just wonder if we're feeding back to the LGA, what can we actually do to try and educate people out of the mindset that someone you disagree with is your enemy? Because it's not really, I mean, as Leader said earlier on, all we disagree about is how to improve society, not, nobody sets out to, you know, cause trouble. But I'm just very keen that we need to change, turn this around somehow, to adopt more tolerance and more respect, and that's something we've talked about quite a lot in this chamber. And I would welcome the LGA going just a little bit further and explaining how we can actually put some concrete steps into action so that people can carry out their business and their democratic duties at whatever level of government without any fear. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Donnelly. Councillor Branson.
Thank you, Chairman. Firstly, I just would like to congratulate my fellow Havant councillors on their elevation, councillor Briggs and councillor, I'm a little lonely back here. But I really must support this motion because I believe, as has been said, democracy is at risk. In the recent elections in Havant, the abuse that some of the Conservative candidates had to accept was not acceptable. And it means we are having problems getting good candidates to stand, and some good councillors stood down because of the abuse that they had had at recent elections. All local councillors are there to help their residents, and we all agree on that. And really, we must make sure that this abuse is not, doesn't become acceptable, and therefore I completely support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Branson. Councillor Wallace.
Thank you. Last year, as Green Group leader at Winchester City Council, I signed up to the LGA's Debate Not Hate campaign. Intimidation, personal attacks and harassment have no place in our society. And we, as elected members, have a duty to set the standards for our residents. I am pleased to see the motion, welcome the commitments that are being made and will be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wallace. Councillor Parker-Jones.
Thank you very much. I too will be supporting this motion. I think it's hugely important. I think anybody who enters into public life does so for the best things for our communities. I do hope councillor Drew has never experienced anything hostile from anybody, and it all goes every way. I have to say that I have found Hampshire County Council a really safe council to be, and I have been supported by people from all different groups. And I feel really sorry for areas if you don't receive that support, because we are here at the end of the day wanting the same things for our communities. We may have different ways and different thoughts on how we will achieve that. So I absolutely support this, and yeah, I think other councils could really benefit from this and understanding that there's more that unites us than divides us. Thank you.
Councillor Porter, Jackie Porter.
Thank you. I do support the motion. As Winchester City councillors, councillor Wallace has already said, we have already done so some time ago before the recent local elections. It was a cross-party motion, which I think we all really appreciated too. However, I would say that public safety for me, as a local councillor for a long time, is actually my concern not from the other members of the public, because I always feel pretty safe with them, but from other political colleagues who challenge the person rather than the policy. I was struck this morning unfortunately by the Prime Minister's comment. He was asked to try and talk about this Debate Not Hate campaign and to seek from him the offer of not to downgrade the character of any other political character taking part in the election, specifically the leader of the opposition. And he refused to restrict that, and I thought that was really telling. We do need to make sure that if we really sign up to this today, we actually believe it and we do it for ourselves and to each other, not just in the politeness of this chamber, but during election time as well, when actually most of us feel at our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Councillor Tostane.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I was about to say about the whole point, that's the Jo Cox quote, that we have far more united and have far more in common than that which divides us. Now, I know when I became a councillor, and I am a double hatter as well, that one of the things, I came in first of all thinking that there was all this opposition and things, and something I've found over the few years I've been doing this, is how much we actually are all trying to work for the same ends, and we are all together in this. And certainly, apart from the fun and games that go on during election season, I find that most people want to work together, and I really enjoy that, and it makes it a pleasure to be a councillor. And that's something that I really absolutely support, this process of Debate Not Hate, which we actually do work quite well in Basingstoke now, because it does make life so much more bearable for when the challenges do come, and there are always challenges. We do need to question each other on our different political outlooks and have a robust debate, that's correct, as adults and grown-ups, and I really enjoy that as well. I want to stay being a councillor, I enjoy doing this, and I don't want to feel that I live in fear either from the public or from fellow politicians. And as far as I'm concerned, I think this is a great thing. I really like it, and I will definitely be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tostane. Councillor Mamalineni.
Thank you, Chairman. I wholeheartedly support this motion. I just want to add a different dimension to this aspect. As a minority representative, at first hand, I experienced several challenges and obstacles to stand in the election and to win the election, but they never let me down, and I always believe in the democracy. And not all people are as capable as myself say. Some of the members that who stood for the elections, and they experienced the amount of abuse they received, and they put them off, and they are not coming out. And hopefully, this motion will empower them to come back, and they will believe in the democracy. And often, Chairman, the case is not from the community or the people, it is from the political activists that sit around, from the politicians. They are the ones who exhibit this behaviour when we knock the doors or we sit at, as the tellers, the polling stations. I myself reported to the polling station several times because I was a teller there, and people don't like me to sit there. Thank you very much.
Councillor Collett.
Thank you, Chairman. Sorry. I neglected to congratulate you on your earlier on, so may I do so now? First of all, I'm reassured by councillor Parker that even my views are allowed to be heard in the council chamber. Thank you, Stephen, for that. That is very reassuring. Yes, I think a number of us in the chamber have experienced, I've certainly had this when I stood for Parliament, some of the things that would absolutely make your hair curl come from people, you just have to develop a very thick skin. I think a lot of us have that from internet trolls these days, even colleagues who criticise you on their own websites and then block you from seeing it, so constituents come to you and then send you a copy of what's been said. There are a lot of different ways that this happens. So it's really good that we're discussing this today. I just wanted to pick up on one point made earlier on that talked about, I think it was councillor Donnelly, that talked about our, no, it was councillor Drew, talked about our enemies being China, Russia and so on. As nations, they may be, but the people there, not necessarily. Many of them are being oppressed by their governments and should be our friends in wanting to do something about that. And I think we need to remind ourselves of that, because it's all about reducing tensions, reducing hostility between human beings that we need to try and go forward on. But what I really wanted to say is that I totally welcome this motion, fully support it, but we must see it as a first step. I think we also then need to go on and say, right, now what are the causes of that change that councillor Parker described from thirty, forty, fifty years ago? Why are things so much more hostile now than they were in the past? And what can we do about that? Is it our way of life? Is it the more competitive way of doing everything? Is it social media or social media being poorly used? I think we need to understand what those causes are and try and get under the skin of that to change this, not just accept that this is a permanent way of life. So Chairman, I fully support the motion and hope it goes through unanimously. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Collett. Councillor Forster.
Thank you, Chair. I signed up to the LGA Debate Not Hate campaign well over a year ago. I fully support this motion. I want to just tell you a couple of little stories. It won't take long. I was subject to the sort of thing that councillor Reed was referring to and councillor Porter in district and parish opposition with a councillor who was offensive, just damn right nasty. But ultimately, I made a complaint, and that was upheld. They were discriminatory. They were found to be discriminatory. They demonstrated bullying behaviour. They broke their own code of conduct. They brought the council into disrepute. They breached rules on respect for others. This was another councillor, not a county councillor, but a district and town councillor. Of course, great upset. The judgement was that they should apologise properly. They did not. No action could be taken. That is poor. I am glad our rules allow decent action. The second story I just wanted to relate is quite different. I had a situation where I suffered a lot of harassment from a resident, completely separate from the first incident. I ended up quite fearful of going out of my house. I made a complaint to the police, reported it. I'd like to thank and congratulate police for the way they dealt with it, which was phenomenal. They immediately investigated, they took the information from myself, they dealt with it, they knocked on the door, the thing was dealt with and has never re-arisen. So when the situation does arise, police may need to get involved, but they do so properly. I think adopting this motion or supporting this motion will help send a message, and we do need to behave in a collegiate manner. In this chamber and all the members here, I have the utmost respect for, and we do work together. That is how it should be. Sorry.
Thank you, councillor Forster. Councillor Dowden.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I'd just like to point out a few things. Obviously, I support this motion. I don't think there's anybody in the room that wouldn't support it, quite frankly. But I just want to cast my mind back. When I first became a county councillor, it was thirty-two years ago now, I came into this council chamber very aggrieved about a planning application, and that's what the public actually supported me in order to get into this council and into Test Valley in another district council the same way. And judging, I've had no hate from the general public towards me in all of those years, quite frankly. Even my votes show that, when the percentage of vote I get, and I'm sure the Conservatives on Test Valley would acknowledge that as well. But the thing that I find the worst of all is, for example, when I first became a county councillor, I was lucky if I got three letters a week about complaints or whatever to show in any sort of, you know, dissatisfaction towards me or the council or whatever. But with the situation I get, the biggest problems of all is from private utilities, because of course, under licence, they can dig up a road here, put traffic lights and block a road off, as I tried to mention in the first instance in North Baddeley at the moment, and it has been for weeks, absolute disruption because of putting new, you know, utilities in on the roads, et cetera. And so what I find really is that I just feel that Facebook hasn't done any good at all to, you know, obviously, people use it. I watch it, I have to, the same as anybody else, but I don't send messages out on it, quite frankly, because you can get yourself into trouble with it as well. But I just feel personally that I enjoy being a councillor, and I have, I've done my best in those years. Not everybody agrees, obviously, but I do my best. But it's disheartening, and it's difficult for people to get new councillors now, and that's all parties. Why is that? It's because they see some of the things that happen to people who get on the front line and try to do their best, and so they, you know, I've asked people, would you like to stand or whatever, and they, oh God, Alan, I couldn't put up with what you have to put up with, or whatever, with all those sort of emails and whatever. So I would, well, I'm sure the council will support this, but I think we really need to nail this down and to prevent any more hate situations coming out. And it can start, actually, even with this general election. A lot of truths told rather than lies. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Dowden. Councillor Wade.
Thank you, Chairman, and congratulations on your election and the elevation of your colleagues. I wasn't actually going to speak in this debate, because it's clear, we all support it, it's the right thing to do. But something occurred to me that hasn't actually been mentioned upon. This council, as a corporate body, has a role to play in this, because sometimes we do things that put us members in the firing line, and it's got nothing to do with us, we just happen to be in the local area where this council is doing something. And, you know, I'm very fortunate, I have a very thick skin, so it throws it, but I recognise it isn't good for members generally, and it isn't good for trying to get new councillors. I'm going to quote a recent example, and councillor Adam King knows that. This council has done a highway project in my division that's gone wrong from start to finish. The impact on the local community has been vital. Their amount of abuse on social media directed, sorry, initially at me and the reputation of the county council was probably the most I've ever seen over one particular incident. And what I would like to add to that, we have a role to play as a council, a corporate body. If we're going to do a project in a division that has, you can tell, will have significant impact on the population, we need to have some public relations strategy as part of that project. And we also ought to keep the local member totally involved, even in the design stage, because all of that puts us in a very difficult position trying to explain something, anything about, that everybody around doesn't want, and that really affects their lives in a negative way. So my contribution to this is, if we're going to do a big project that affects a lot of people in a division, we need a public relations strategy so that we engage with them at the very beginning, and we lower the temperature, and we don't put anybody in that position, because not everybody's thick-skinned, is all right. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wade. Councillor Chegwin.
Thank you, Chairman. It's been a very good debate, the debates here always are, and that's part of actually the problem. We do actually debate things here without hate. We have our differences, but the real problems are outside this chamber, and some of them are on other councils as well. I was trying to think of any time in my forty-plus years or forty years on this council, that any councillor has lost their rag with me in the council, even I tried to get them to lose the rag. But the only one I could think of, actually, but the only one I could think of was actually your father, Roly, who was here many, many years ago. I once referred to you when you first got in Parliament as his little boy, and he didn't like that, and made it very clear. Actually, he'd be very proud of where his little boy has ended up, and all congratulations to you. But we do debate things properly and rightly in this chamber, and if we didn't, we would be very quickly hauled up by our colleagues, let alone other parties. But that's not always so elsewhere. I was referred to once on Gosport Borough Council as the dictator of North Korea, Kim Yong-hoon. Well, if anyone said that here, they would be shot down straight away. But it was actually councillor Philpot on Gosport who referred to me like that just a year or two ago. So the point, the point that councillor Reed made, councillor Reed made a very valid point, we behave here, and it must apply to other councils as well, and I hope councillor Philpot will take note of that. We will see, I suspect and fear in the next six weeks, an awful lot of hate nationally from all parties and individuals, rather than debate. A lot of us do actually have the years of candidates, MPs, some on your side, ministers, et cetera. Let's say to them, you know, when you are on TV and you're attacking one another in an unfair way or a hateful way, that just adds to the public perception that you're all as bad as one another, and it turns people off politics and public life. And that saddens me. I often get people saying, you're all as bad as one another. I say, no, there are actually really good people in all parties who work damned hard for their communities, so don't tar us all with the same brush. We all get it on social media, we'll certainly see it the next six weeks. I do wish that the police would take a tougher line at times when there are complaints on that of abuse. We've just lost a councillor in Gosport, actually, councillor Philpot's ward, who has suffered horrendous abuse from his ex-next-door neighbour, who's well-known on many things, actually, so much so that he felt forced to move, and the abuse has still continued. Now, that is unacceptable, a lot of that abuse online, but we can't address it ourselves. The police and authorities, in my view, should take a tougher line on it. Is it worse than it's ever been? Yes, in online, it is. In real life, no. I've had a paving slab through my house window, I've had one through my car windscreen, I've had a car written off before with acid and paint stripper. It happens, it is not good, it is diabolical, it should not be acceptable, it does drive people away from public life, and all of us, and that includes MPs and all our colleagues, have a duty to try and address it. And I really hope that in the general election, there will actually be more adult debate, but I fear there won't be on all sides. It does sadden me if it puts people off public life. I think Jackie from Haven mentioned that, candidates on her side, people do say, well, we don't want to take it on. And yet, actually, we need to get more good people into public life, and we all have a duty on that, and so do others as well. In conclusion, I'd just say it's personal as well. Adrian and I will remember, people mentioned David Ames, other MPs, we remember a guy called Andy Pennington, who worked for the MP for Cheltenham, who was killed when someone attacked with a sabre, the MP, Nigel Jones, and it was actually Andy who lost his life. So it's not totally new, but social media, in my view, has made it worse, and I just hope in the general election, we will see a higher level of debate. My fear is we won't. Support the motion today, yes. Councillor Philpot, remember it when we get back to Gosport, because we'll remind you, and let's all of us try and persuade our colleagues as well, and people we know on social media, to just show a little more respect to everyone as well, because we're all here, despite our disagreements, to try and do good for our own communities. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Chegwin. Councillor Crawford.
Thank you, Chairman. I have to say, I'm slightly disagreeing with the first paragraph of this motion, because I don't actually see it's a role of the LGA to be promoting respect for local councillors in our areas. I've seen over the last few months that that's the role of we as candidates and councillors to go around and do that for ourselves. And if you can't do it, you don't get elected. That's, it seems to me as straight, as straightforward as that. That being said, I would also say that things have actually improved in more recent times, certainly between members and between political groups, because I recall the time in 1981, when I was leader of Labour group on Rushmore Borough Council, where we were banned from serving on committees because we'd been too aggressive against the controlling group on the council. Now, of course, I'm not at all aggressive now, as you all appreciate, but that's the situation. But I have experienced quite a bit of aggression on the doorstep, people coming up, at one instance, chap turned up. It's usually to do with what I'm telling them in my leaflets. People object strongly to the way that I've been perhaps putting forward the case for my election. And so on this occasion, this guy turned up with my leaflet, and he threatened to put it in a very unpleasant place if I did, if I sent him any more of these leaflets. And like the councillor there, I reported this to the police, and the police did deal with it very firmly, and I never heard from that person again, although he still continued to get my leaflets. So. And so from that point of view, I think things, certainly between political groups, have improved, and I've come to the conclusion that it's only by working together that we can achieve things together. I'm not sure that over the next six weeks, we're going to see that, because I've noticed that there has been a certain amount of, what I would say, objectionable personal criticism, but then that seems to come into the House of Commons all the time, every Wednesday we see it, and it's, if that's carried on into the general election, we're going to see quite a bit of unpleasantness, it seems to me. But I support the motion, but I don't think necessarily that the LG will be as effective as we are, getting out and persuading people about the benefit of local councillors. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Crawford. I think I'm right in saying we have one more speaker, oh, two more speakers from the floor. I'm conscious of the time, I am proposing to break for lunch at one o'clock, unless it's clear that we can get through this motion and the Part Two business in time for us to finish by about quarter past one. With that in mind, councillor Philpot.
Thank you, thank you very much, Chairman. Well, as I've been named in this chamber, I think I ought to have at least the right of reply. And it's interesting, it's always, it's always interesting to hear councillor Chegwin, because we do go back a long way, we do have quite a lot of history, and like as always, why let the truth get in the way of a good story? The actual truth is this, that we had in, it was in Gosport Borough Council, we had minority orders, and it lasted for many, many years, and within two weeks of councillor Chegwin becoming leader of the council and his group running the council, we invoked minority orders because on a particular issue as an opposition group, and the following morning, an extraordinary council meeting was called for the following week, and on the agenda was to abolish minority orders. Now, when we came to the full council meeting to abolish the minority orders so that we couldn't raise anything in full council if we disagreed with it, I said, I said, this is not the party of John Stuart Mill, this is the party of Kim Yong-un. And therefore, I never mentioned anybody in the council chamber by name wouldn't do such a thing, never have. So I would like councillor Chegwin just to remember this, and he can, he can reflect on that, and actually read the press coverage as well, because the press coverage was pretty accurate at the time. So I can expect, I'm sure, an apology coming from councillor Chegwin in this chamber if he wishes to, otherwise, in writing would be great, because councillor Chegwin himself, I do have some sympathy for him, I really genuinely do, because he's the only councillor in all the years I've been on the council, and that's now thirty-four years on Gosport Council, as well as seven years here, who has actually been punched in the face by a former Liberal Democrat leader of the council in Gosport, and he was punched in the face in the council chamber itself. So, I mean, I do have a lot of sympathy for him, and, you know, I realise, you know, that was a very traumatic experience that he underwent on that occasion. So context is everything, Mr Chairman, so I'm expecting and I await an apology. Thank you.
Finally, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chairman. Taking on board the learning experience we've just had here, I'll start off with apologising for anything I might have ever said or done. It truly wasn't mentioned. I'd like to just focus on my, on part F of the motion, which talks about security and will being resources being made available to councillors through the portal. Now, I've been quite horrified by some of the stories that people have recounted about personal abuse and about online abuse. I think I've been really, really lucky, I've been, generally speaking, you know, usually any snarkiness comes from fellow politicians, and funny enough, it's often from your own side, isn't it, more than anything else? But I think that one of the things, you know, I've been a signed-up member for the campaign for a long time, and you'll see on the bottom of any email you ever get from me, you will see that, and you can download those resources for yourself, and I find they're quite a useful reminder to have when you get to an email and you see it on the bottom of your, of your signature, and you suddenly think, so, well, maybe I'll just check what I've written, you know, have I been reasonable? Because sometimes, as we've just learned, it's not what you say, it's also how it might be received, and we just need to think a little bit about that. But in terms of resources as well, on the LGA website, they do have toolkits, and they have toolkits for councillors, for councils as well as councillors. And some councils have done some very good work. In one council, the deputy leader is a safety champion for councillors in order to keep this on the agenda. In other councils, they have done some risk assessments and thought about different circumstances. I mean, I'm very much an urban councillor, some people are more rural, you may not have good street lighting, you may even have worse street lighting coming up, you might want to think about, should you have some kind of safety devices? So I know Cardiff, for example, have done lots of work around that, Telford have done other work in terms of providing support, advice, and how to work when you're working alone safely. And there is some advice on the Susie Lamplu Trust website as well about that, which I think would be useful to remind yourselves of campaigning. So my big ask with this would just be to say, let's remember we're human beings, guys, a bit kindness doesn't hurt, apologise in advance and afterwards if you think you've been a bit rough. But more importantly, as a council, as an organisation, what can we do to add some additional resource? I know it doesn't sometimes feel like it's the council's responsibility to protect us, but I think it's really helpful if we can have resources and additional resources and think about what help we might need for different types of councillors to help secure their safety a bit more. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Taylor. I'm now going to ask the second of the motion, councillor Chad, to speak, followed by the proposer, councillor Huggins.
Thank you, Chairman. I will keep it very, very brief. I think debating and disagreeing with each other is a healthy part of democracy, but abuse and intimidation does cross the line. I think each and every one of us have put ourselves forward to stand, to represent our communities, but what we haven't stood up for and what we had, we never wanted to experience was some of the abuse and the intimidation that we've heard that people have experienced today. And more importantly, and something that really touches my heart, is my family didn't sign up for that as well. When I made the choice to become a county councillor, I made it with the intent of becoming and helping the community that I serve. My family supported me in helping serve that community, and still do, but they haven't signed up for what some of us have experienced as well. Thank you. I just urge everyone to support this motion today.
Thank you, councillor Chad. Before I ask the proposer, councillor Huggins, to propose the motion, I'd just like to ask the leader, if he wants to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. I think, as always, it's been a good, humoured and instructive debate. I'm sure that you are going to support this, quite rightly so. I mean, it takes us back to that issue that we've talked about earlier, about us all just disagreeing about the way in which we wish to do good. And I think there's something that I might be able to provide for the members from Gosport, a bit of advice that I give my children, it's not what you say, it's what other people hear. And that might just be worthwhile thinking. And while I'm talking about my children, can I just say that one of them is watching at the moment, Matthew, you've got an A level in half an hour, you need to go and start doing some stuff now. Revising would be good. Thank you, Mr Chairman.
Councillor Huggins.
Thank you, Chairman. I thank and welcome everyone's comments, and more for sharing their experiences. And as we move forward, let's make those unacceptable and not the norm. It does lie with us to call out unacceptable behaviour, and I'm sure we will do that and be reflective of that moving forward. Councillor Taylor, we can take many learnings from this, even from the debate today, from what we've shared and what we've heard. Within my member development role, I will take forward your comments on resources and the differentiation within those resources that we may offer, LGA offer. And, again, I think it's implied within the motion that we should be reflective and give thought before any of our actions, whether that's in our response to an email or any communications, either here in the chamber, but more so most probably online or in group chat. And councillor Wade, yes, we are a corporate body, and as community leaders, it is the action we take and the behaviours we demonstrate, and not the position we hold, and we should be reflective of that. This is our first step, I hope, in supporting and making aware of reporting and helping those that work within public life, and making sure that our experiences are not the norm, but they are also known and heard to take those learnings forward. Councillor Reed, I echo your thoughts that this should be adopted by others. You can sign up personally, but as recommendation B suggests, you can take this forward with your group leaders and your local councils and parishes. Councillor Donnelly, I thank you for highlighting that our volunteers can also experience attack and intimidation. and intimidation, and we should also include them in our wider thought. Councillor Porter, I agree, it can come from our colleagues within the room here attacking us personally, and we should reflect on policy and the debate. As councillor Drew stated, we are not enemies, but we all have our residents at the core of our work. We are united in this, and I present this motion. Thank you.
Anyone against this motion? Are you all in favour? Thank you very much indeed. We're moving on to Part Two items. First of all, Item 16, Hampshire and Isle of Wight Fire and Rescue Authority. There are no questions, as I understand it, Chair, and therefore we can go straight on to the report.
Thank you, chairman, and congratulations to you and others on your elevation. I have nothing to add to my report, but I'm happy to take questions if desired.
And no debate, and therefore we can move straight on to Item 17, executive and committee members' reports. Executive lead member for Children's Services. Councillor Chad.
Thank you, chairman. I'm happy to present this report to full council today and happy to take any questions.
Any debate? Okay, moving on. Executive member for Education, councillor Forster.
Thank you, Chair. I'm happy to present this report as written. I'd like to just highlight a couple of bits, conscious that I'm pretty much the only thing standing between you and lunch. I'll wait for a bit of silence. The county council is very focused on ensuring that all children can access high-quality education as near to their families and local communities as possible. In this report, you'll see there's a couple of items on resource provision. I just wanted to draw your attention, and particularly any members of the public, to item, page 57, Item 2.2, which just describes a little bit about what resource provision is. It's something that the county is very focused on delivering, because it is a way of providing the best education for those children for whom it's suitable, and that's exactly what we're trying to do. In addition to what's in this report, we are doing a lot around special education needs with three brand-new schools being delivered, and I'd commend the work carried out by our officers on ensuring that those progress smoothly, that we've had the funding, and things go according to plan. But this report, I'd like to commend to you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Any questions for councillor Forster? Any debate? Thank you all very much. I close the meeting. I'll see you all again after the general election. And could the webcast be stopped now, please?